My name's Dan Carney. It's my privilege to be served as the Chairman of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees. And this is a meeting, regularly called meeting of the Board of Trustees of Weatherford College on this date, Thursday, March the 7th, 2024, at 12:30 PM in the community room with the emerging technologies and workforce building located at 225 College Park Drive, Weatherford, Texas, to consider and act upon the posted agenda. I do call this meeting to order. Mr. Baker, would you provide us with an indication?
Be happy to. Thank you. Please bow with me. We have so much to be thankful for at our college at this time, so much to be excited about. We thank you for the great opportunities for this institution, for all the students you're bringing our way. We pray you bring safety to all of our students, faculty, and staff over the spring break, and they'll come back ready to finish strong. Thank you for our board and for their time. In your name we pray. Amen.
I'll lead us to pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This morning, has anyone signed up for public comment today?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Third item on the agenda is the President's Report. President Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions and employee notices. Recognizations. Dr. Marvella Starlin was recently recognized by the Texas Board of Nursing for her survey submission on what kind of instructional changes she and her faculty have made this past year in clinical settings. Great job, ADN team. We have Dr. Starlin with us today and Dean Kathy Boswell. As you know, Dean Boswell was appointed by Governor Greg Abbott to the Texas Board of Nursing. Would you two ladies please stand so that we can give you a round of applause? Thank you for all that you do. We love our nursing team. Y'all do a dynamic job. Weatherford College recently honored 45 of the finest teachers from across the region at the annual Jack Harvey Academy of Exemplary Teachers Celebration. Superintendents, principals, and teachers from 11 counties attended the event. Our coyote athletic teams continue to excel. Baseball, women's tennis, men's tennis, and softball have all been recently nationally ranked. We continue to strive for excellence, both in the classrooms and on the competition surfaces. Employee notices. DMAC Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. Vern Higbee, our Operations Sergeant from the Police Department, resigned effective 2/7/24. Brad Keller, the Assistant Director of Human Resources, resigned effective 3/1/24. Dr. Ronald Epps, the Interim Director of our Vet Tech Program, has retired effective 6/30/24. And David Daniel, our Department Chair of Life Sciences, has retired effective 8/16/24. We thank Vern, Brad, Ronald, and David for their service and wish them the very best in future endeavors. Mr. Chair, that concludes the President's Report.
Thank you, President Farmer. Item number four is the consent agenda and financial reports. Items A through H have been posted and are there for any comment or questions from any members of the Board? Any questions or statements about any of those items? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as it appears?
Aye, so.
And a second?
One second.
All in favor, raise your hand, please. Unanimous. So approved. Item number five, consideration of possible action of adoption of the 2024-2025 tuition and fees. Dr. Cantrell?
Yes, sir. The administration, along with the assistance of the Tuition and Fees Advisory Committee, along with Dr. Sarah Locke, are recommending the tuition and fees that have been attached into your agenda. Just to summarize, for all academic programs, 7% in district increase is recommended for non-dual credit students, which is a total of $8 per hour. 9% for out-of-district students are $18 semester credit hour. 8% for out-of-district Wise County, Wise County, students are $12 per credit hour. And 9% of our out-of-state students at $26 per credit hour. As you will recall, this takes care of all of our academic programs. And as you will recall, Dr. Sarah Locke came and made a presentation to you all about the FAST program in November, discussing the House Bill aid and the dual credit enrollment. House Bill aid, to refresh your memory, was adopted by the legislature this last year and instituted a new financial aid for SWIFT transfer, or called the FAST system, for dual credit funding. Community colleges were given the opportunity to opt in or opt out of this FAST system. Working with Dr. Shannonne Iadago, Executive Vice President of Academic Services, and Sarah Locke, who is the Associate Dean for Dual Credit, we've analyzed the financial potential for both options and anticipate that opting into the FAST program is the best decision for Weatherford College, considering the dual credit students in our service area. With that said, a dual credit tuition of $56.87 is being recommended for all technical and academic dual credit classes. This rate is set by the state as a maximum amount that we can charge for tuition that any participating financial aid or SWIFT transfer program may charge for all dual credit students. We basically analyzed the current year's tuition and fees, along with dormitory and board rates and other miscellaneous fees, and have considered many other factors and applied the recommended rates presented to you. That said, going back and looking at it, tuition in district with the rates, we will collect estimated collection of $270,776 in new funds. The tuition out of district will be $703,178. Tuition out of state, $149,027. Tuition out of district Wise County, $169,438. Tuition dual credit academic, that's where we will lose. It will go down at that point to half of what we were charging before, basically, for $869,000. We are looking at tuition dual credit. The technical will increase, however, to $152,000 new monies. So all that said, the net tuition revenue increase at this time will be $575,000 for the coming year. The technology fee that we're also recommending that we adopt across the board will be $522,000 new dollars. Tuition online for online course fee revenue will be $25,000. It's what we've estimated this time. We're not as clear in that area, but that's an estimate we're using. And dual credit administration fee that we're recommending to charge at this time is $265,000. So the total estimated increase in revenue will be $1,388,836. Now, I will say that we have not collected all of our, I think, a lot of the departments are finalizing their budget requests right now. And with that said, we're looking at several, there'll be several cuts in those dual credit programs, the way, in the cost associated with these. So some of the cost of loss will be absorbed with our expenses and will be adjusted. There are other miscellaneous fees that were attached that we're recommending, but most, nearly all of those, which I will, I'm not going to go through those. I think you've got them here in your listing. And those are really to offset expenses that we have. We are recommending that the dormitory housing cost for the new Durant Hall to be $2,590 per room for a one- and two-bedroom unit, and $2,365 per room for a four-bedroom unit. The housing cost for Coyote Village will remain the same at $2,485 per room for a one- and two-bedroom unit, and $2,260 for a four-bedroom unit. With just miscellaneous fees to cover costs or other recommendations. Do you all have other questions that I can entertain?
Refresh my memory, Dr. Cantrell, on the FAST. We charged $56.87. Do they kick in something with that?
They, for all of the free and reduced lunches, we're required not to charge them.
Okay.
But they come back, and the state will reimburse us $56.70 on those. And then all the other students have to pay their own.
Okay.
And we had been told it was going to be 55. Just this last month, they came out and changed it to the 56, all because that dollar and something was supposed to go a long way.
Dr. Cantrell?
Yes, sir.
Could I have a hard copy of that dual credit report?
Sir?
Could I have a hard copy of that dual credit report?
Oh, absolutely. Anything I've got here, this is what I've gotten. I'm just speaking from my notes here, but I can, I will get you. I know Sarah had a good printout, and I can get that for you, too.
Thank you very much.
Can you tell me, for the four categories of in district, out of district, wise, and out of state, what is our student population for each one of those?
I don't, in district, their actual semester hours, I don't have that on this. I'll have to get it for you, but I will, I've got totals here.
What, how many students we have in each one of those categories?
Right. Let me get that for you, because I did not bring that. I have totals on my report that I've got here for you.
Any other questions or just items to discuss with Dr. Cantrell? Doctor, do you have a, do you have a motion that you would ask us to?
Yes, I do.
Consider today?
I would recommend at this time that you adopt the tuition and fee rates that I've presented in your package, that on this schedule and as proposed.
Mr. Chair, is, I move approval and adoption. Okay? Do you have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, as has been presented? Appears to be unanimous. Item number six is the topic of appointment of a liaison to the Weatherford College Foundation Board of Directors. Mr. Baker, would you explain a little bit about that, please?
Yes, yes, sir. I'd be happy to. As you know, the Weatherford College Foundation has a Board of Directors, between 18 and 25 members of the community. The Weatherford College Board of Trustees, according to policy, names a board member to act as a liaison between the Board of Trustees and the Weatherford College Foundation Board. I want to thank Mrs. Leela Morris. She has served in that role for five years. She said she's ready for someone else to have the opportunity to do that. And so, we would encourage the Board to name a liaison. It is a non-voting position to invite it to our board meetings three times per year.
Thank you for that. I won't make the motion, but I would make a suggestion that Dr. Dowd be considered for that position. And if someone would care to make such a motion, we would entertain it.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Smith?
I'll second it.
There's a second. All in favor of that? So done, so approved. Congratulations, Mr. Dowd.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good start. Item number seven on the agenda is reports, and I'm calling on President Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You have been provided a written update on Weatherford College, Wise County. Things continue to go exceedingly well up in Wise County. We have new signage out on the highway there that looks very nice, and Kristen and her team just continue to do a phenomenal job in Wise County. Also included are our standard academics and student services work updates and some of the various things that are going on, including several new articulation agreements that we are very excited about closing in on to continue to expand our students' educational opportunities. And then, here to give us a verbal presentation today is Dr. T. and Chris, our athletic trainer. And they're going to tell us about Vicki and Jerry Durant Hall. We just, most of you just got a very fast tour of that beautiful new facility, and they're going to tell you a little bit more about the details of Vicki and Jerry Durant Hall. Dr. T.
All right. Thank you for your time, and we're here to talk about what you just saw. I believe you were very impressed with what you saw, and over time, I've been in there. I've been blown away by this. Today, we're going to be talking about student housing at Weather College and the top tier housing facilities for our students. Chris Nelson, of course, one of the speakers. He is a head trainer for Weather College and has been a lot of his time down there in the first floor of Vicki and Jerry Durant. But also, we have Douglas Jefferson, Associate Dean of Student Development, and Mr. Jimmy Walker, who is the Student Housing Manager. So he will be directly overseeing that facility along with Coyote Village. So, the first thing I'm going to talk about is, is we're all familiar with dorms, college dorms, and we think about them, tiny cramped little places with two, three, four people in there, oftentimes not having their own restroom. You have to go down the hallway to the restroom and the communal showers and stuff like that. And that's not what we have already. These are pictures of Coyote Village apartment suites. We have four-bedroom and two-bedroom suites. As you can see, already, we have phenomenal facilities. And just by the way, that picture down at lower right and that picture on the upper left, those are competitors of us in our athletic district. I believe that's Ranger down here, and I think that's McClellan up there, but I'm not sure about that. So, this is what we provide, this is what we provide our students at Coyote Village. Each student has their own room, a full-size bed. They also, as you can see in the picture in the upper right, there is, each suite has its own kitchenette, as well as each side of the four-bedroom unit, two on each side, each student has their own vanity, and they share a restroom and shower bath, as far as that's concerned. So we're already with Coyote Village, way, we're light years ahead of everyone else all around here, quite honestly. So we don't bother calling these dorms, certainly not to the public, because sometimes we do it amongst yourselves, because it's easy. These are apartment suites, and this is something that you're not going to find anywhere else. Just to put things in perspective, the current Coyote, Coyote, Coyote Village, Coyote Village has 268 beds that we lease out. Durant Hall will add 116 more beds to that, just to put things in perspective. Again, last year, on Move In Day, we had 68 students on our waitlist who wanted to get in and could not because the place was full. So we are expecting that waitlist to, or that demand to continue to grow as it has for the last several years. Also, I would like to point out that growing student housing is very important for the college, for a variety of reasons, and we're going to talk a little bit about that as a presentation. But one thing that's very important is students who stay in Coyote Village or any student housing anywhere in America, and this is not just a uniquely Weatherford College sort of thing, they tend to have a much greater level of success. These students are required to be full-time students, and of course, they have to maintain GPAs of 2.0 or better, otherwise they're going to get in trouble. Students have proven to be, that live in student housing, tend to have overwhelmingly higher rate of success and retention and graduation. So by expanding student housing, we're growing, we're providing more opportunities for more student success for our college. Additionally, just like any college or university in America, the heart and soul of the life of the college is the people who live on campus. So the more students you have living on campus, the more you're going to grow student life, the more you're going to see students going to the games, and it's going to continue to move. This college has been moving more and more to kind of this very, very much of a college atmosphere, which draws students from elsewhere. I gave a tour just the other night to some people, and they couldn't believe what they were seeing, including some people who went to school here once upon a time. Now they're bringing their kids here. And I gave a tour around campus, and they were blown away by what they saw and the things that we're doing. And so Coyote Village and Durant Hall is going to be key to the future growth of this college. But before we look to the future, let's look to the past a little bit. I am a historian, and I have a captive audience, so you must deal with this. I started looking at some of these pictures, and by the way, this is from the graphic services under Mr. Baker. I asked Katie Edwards over there, can you send me some pictures? I kind of regretted that question, because she really got, I don't know how many emails I got in a matter of 10 minutes. So I have a lot of pictures. I didn't use all of them. But you can see, see, this is the original Once Upon a Time, early 20th century Weatherford College student housing. Up there on the upper left is the original women's dorm. Up on the upper right was a building that the college leased out for boys. The bus down there, that bus took the boys back and forth from campus. And you can, just so you know, while they may have allowed smoking, like the guy with the cigar in his mouth in the middle, we do not allow smoking in student housing. That's not acceptable. And these two young men down on the right are explaining to you how much they really wish they had air conditioning back then. So when we fast forward a little bit, this is roughly World War II era, post-World War II. You might not be aware of this, but after World War II, with the old campus on one side of it, there was a trailer park colony, as they call it, the Land and Trailer Colony, as a result of the veterans' bills that came after World War II. And so you have a lot of veterans, you know, just Weatherford College, as well as any other places, enjoyed the kind of explosion of veterans coming out of, coming out of serving during World War II. On the left is Columbia Hall, which was another women's dorm. On the right was a men's dorm. I believe at the last year's, when we were honoring former faculty members, some of the, I think the basketball player was talking about, I think he stayed in this place, right on the edge of campus and all of that sort of stuff. So that's Weatherford College in the past, back before we even moved onto this campus. And then, Mr. Douglas is going to talk to us about what he experienced.
I was hired here in '91, and the, when I was hired, no, I was hired in as the housing supervisor for the north dorm, which was co-ed. But we also had the south dorm, which was, called the south dorm. That was all female. So what happened after that is, we took them some votes, asked students, you know, if they wanted to rename them. And the north dorm became Coyote Hall, and the south dorm became Cowt Hall. So, and it was still all females in the south dorm, but this is the way you look at, if you look at the top right, that's the type of furniture we had in Coyote Hall.
In the '90s.
In the '90s.
It's the '90s. It looks like '72.
Yeah. It was very, very odd. I knew we probably got some new furniture, but this is, you know, I'm talking because I was here during that era when Coyote Village was built, then now with Durant Hall, so I've been through all different eras of the housing on this current, on this current location here.
So, why I mention this is just to sort of put in perspective where we come from in about 100 years' timeframe. So we've done a lot of growth, and this particular facility that you were able to tour today, that is the future of the college in a variety of ways. That's showing the transformation of the college from where we were to, as a result of your efforts, to where we are now. And now, I will hand it over to the next part of our presentation to Mr. Jimmy Walker to talk about the amenities of the college. What do I call it?
Hello, good afternoon. I'm Jimmy Walker. As you can see from these renderings, just wonderful renderings all over the place, and you got to walk the building as well earlier, this is very much going to be a magnificent building, a magnificent residence for students to live in. You can see the fireplace in these renderings, as well as the chandeliers that will be made of antler. We are very grateful for the very generous donations of Vicki and Jerry Durant, so that we can have these wonderful things in this building. I want to talk to you about the quality and the sort of standards of Durant Hall and what it will look like. As far as security goes, security is always an utmost priority for any residence hall. Of course, there will be individual locking bedrooms with hard deadbolt locks like we have in Coyote Village, as well as key card access to the suites. These will be fobs, similar to what we have in Coyote Village, but better. In the hallways and as well as all the common areas, there will be cameras, and the parking lots will have cameras as well, so that if a vehicle were to pull up, we could actually identify it based on the license plate. The individual rooms themselves will have these extra-long beds and extra-tall ceilings. And the reason I say that, I don't know if you've been to any of our athletic games recently, I'm 6'3", but if you look at some of our basketball players, they tower over me. And so these guys need a good place to sleep and a good place where they don't have to duck under the doorways when they walk in, and we're going to have that here. And overall, this place is just going to look magnificent and beautiful. We talked about some of the competitors and what their dorms look like, and some of those rooms are two, even three people, two, two individual bedroom. Students will have their own privacy, and they'll be able to perform better as athletes, as well as academically as students, when they have these quality of accommodations here. Additionally, there will be ceiling fans and LED lights in each of these bedrooms, armoires, wooden armoires taller than me, so that they can store all of their clothing and athletic wear. And here's an idea of what our layouts look like. So on the right, you have the Coyote Village floor plan, and on the left, you have the Durant Hall suite plan. To give you an idea, the square footages are comparable between the two buildings. There are three separate suites. So Suite A, which is our regular-sized suite, is 962 square feet. Suite B is just three feet larger. They had to make some adjustments to make everything fit, but it is 965 square feet. And Suite C is our ADA rooms. They are 984 square feet. Additionally, there are two resident assistant suites and one manager suite. And all of this, again, is very, very comparable to what we already have. So, good amount of space here. So I would like to invite Mr. Jefferson to come up and speak.
Once again, we're going to talk a little bit about the activities. As you know, activities are very important in colleges. Now, what we're going to learn today is, you know, like when you go to Stephen F. Paulson, Axum Jack, TCU, Horned Frog, Weatherford College. You see the WC, that's what we're using now to promote school spirit. So anytime we're doing anything with cheerleading, we're WC, with schools. So anytime we doing anything with cheerleading, we're WC with school spirit, so you see the W in the C. And that's what we're trying to involve, building tradition, coyote pride. Student activities, as you know, it helps with recruitment as well as retention. If students get involved with activities that are on campus, they are more likely to be successful, and their GPA goes up and they maintain 3.0 or better. The ones who have got athletes, they have to keep at least a 2.0, but a lot of them are doing, as President Farmer has always talked about, academic All-American, so our athletes are doing very well in their GPA. As far as student activities, as you can read up there, the fall, there are 42 planned activities, and then we turn around in the spring, there are 49. But we also include the fine arts activity and athletic games, and there are like 115 options that students can choose from to participate in, and that's a lot at a community college. We're also increasing our number of clubs, because it does athletic dorm, FCA is getting ready to be reestablished here on campus. We have volunteer and community service projects. This past Friday, last Friday, we took a group of students out to the Pittian home to have playtime with the students on Friday, and some of our athletes actually went out there before, and we did that also last year. So that's something, getting our students involved with that. As you can see, who is that in the middle? President Farmer. Activities start with move-in, and what we're going to do, we did this last year, but we're going to increase it this year, is that our athletes will move in on the Wednesday before classes begin, and once they get settled in, they will help the parents and the students of other students move into the housing. So we're going to encourage our, teach and train our athletes to be respectful and to help encourage other students to participate in move-in day. And what this does is, the athletes will get to know the regular student, non-athletic student, and then they can invite them to their sporting events. So that will increase the participation level of athletes, because it's really good to see students at their sporting events. And as you look around, you know, different things, we have different, you see, down there also helping there, so there's a lot of different people that are helping with And in Coyote Village, in Durant Hall, as Mr. Walker stated, we will have a housing manager, assistant housing manager who will be there, and he or she will also assist with student activity. They will have Mr. Grant Mills providing evening activities as well as during the daytime. But as you can see, we have the veterans, we have a lot of different activities, cookouts, but one of the main one, and probably the main one would be our graduation ceremony. And that's at the end, and you see the success and the smile of the students, and those are the ones who have participated, whether it be through class time, through student clubs, through different activities that are presented, who helping in that build their pride at Weatherford College, and that is very, very beneficial. I've been here for 32 years, and I've seen students come and go, I've seen athletes come and go, and the one thing that I can say is that if we as administrators, we as faculty staff encourage our students, they love Weatherford College. It is very important that we continue to represent Weatherford College in that manner. We also, core orientation will be the last thing. We've had a fish camp, we have freshman orientation, now we have core. And this activity is one that bring future students on campus, and they can see what Weatherford College has to offer, and it's something that is very important to recruiting and retaining our students. Next, we bring up Mr. Chris Nelson.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Chris, and I'm here to talk to you about some of the common areas in the Durant Hall. I'm the head athletic trainer here, this is my 13th year, and we are very excited as an athletic department about the opportunities that Durant Hall is going to do for our athletic department. And you toured the place today, and hopefully you walked through there, you saw an empty room, but it is only going to be empty for a little bit longer, because as you see in some of these renderings, it's going to be full of, full-out WC logoed weight racks. There's going to be eight total weight racks. Before I skip this, or before I go to the next slide, you can see the acoustical panels of our athletes, still shots of athletic people that have been in here for the last 15, 20 years. It's going to look really nice from that four-way stop down there. Here's some examples of kind of what it's going to look like. The first floor is about 2,000 square foot, and it is, it's going to consist of eight weight racks that are all connected by pullet bars. There's, it's very efficiently designed. I had a lot of fun working with Power Lift, who's the company who's supplying all this equipment, and we've had multiple meetings where we're looking at the most efficient way that we can lift whole teams safely, is one of the biggest aspects, but also to be efficient in the way that we do it. Having everybody at each station, so what I mean by racks is there's eight stations, and so even our baseball team, which is our biggest rostered team that lifts weights at 48 to 50, we can lift them all at the same time and get the whole workout done in 45 minutes to an hour due to the spaces that we have. So this, this weight rack also consists of free weights and medicine balls and kettle balls and resistance bands and stretching bands that we can just do everything right there at that station. It also has full functional cable pulleys on the back wall that we can do lots of different angles of strength and conditioning to help prevent injuries and then build bigger, faster, stronger athletes. And then, so then the second floor, and it, you saw, you took a tour of the second floor, it overlooks the first floor, it's going to consist mainly of cardio equipment, athlete-powered treadmills where it's basically just a tread, and they, they are in charge of how much resistance they're doing, that we can do lateral shuffles, backpedals, sprints, and really use their own power to get bigger, faster, stronger. But then we also have rowers, which are really good recovery-type machines, and then some Peloton bikes with subscription to different workouts from using the spin bikes all the way to doing yoga and Pilates, and so we will have that subscription. And then also, it has some low-resistance strength equipment, like smaller dumbbells that smaller teams like tennis and golf will be able to actually lift or do their strength conditioning at the exact same time as a baseball team lifting down below. And so that's going to make our athletic schedules and weight schedules a lot more efficient. So Power Lift, I already mentioned the company, we've been working with them for the last three or four months in developing the colors. You can see just a few examples of the colors, black and gold, with the inset floors and everything with safety in mind and efficiency in mind. So here's a couple more of the pictures, and you can see the second floor up here, those Y-like machines are actually air-resistant, and so we can easily, at the push of a button, increase from one pound to 50 pounds of air, and those arms move from up to down, and we can do different type of functional training, sprint training, all that type of stuff. And then it has some benches and power block dumbbells. But you can see the example of the treadmills and the rowers and the spin bikes and everything, it's easily movable, and space is the biggest key for athletic equipment, is we need space to move, not space to sit. And so we need to be able to move weight through range of motion, just like we do on the field and court. Here's just an example of the Betty Jo Graver Center that we're currently using. The picture on the left is full of a lot of machines which are very safe, right? But it's not necessarily exactly what an athlete might need, because we don't really catch ourselves sitting or laying on the field or court, we are moving and up and around. And so we, then on the picture on the right is where the bleachers come back for basketball and volleyball games, and over time, since I've been here, we've gotten some weight racks and some space to move around, but this new weight room is just going to be fantastic for our athletes. And we don't plan on getting rid of this, and really, we put it in the slideshow because it's not all about athletes, it's about the non-student athletes as well. And so with the, with the athletic department moving down to Durant Hall, we're going to have a lot more time during the day for faculty and staff, non-student athletes to get up, get moving, and use the facility. And so it'll still be widely used by non-student athletes as well. So then across from the weight room, across the hallway, we're going to have an athletic training room, and I believe you got a tour of it today, but it's about the same size as the one we currently have, and we are not closing the one that we currently have in the gym because we need it for court sports and everything, but it is definitely going to diminish the amount of foot traffic that comes through the athletic training room in the gym, and we are going to be opening this, this room where we can focus more on whole-body recovery. And so we're putting, as you can see on the right, we're putting a cold plunge, it can be a go-down 39 degrees or up to 104 degrees, and we can sit full-body, we can sit on a platform and just do lower body or ankle or whatever, but it's going to be focused on recovery. So we're going to have that cold plunge, we're going to have complex muscle stimulators and stuff for muscle recovery, along with intermittent compression machines that we already have in our current athletic training room, but we're going to put it down there as well. We also have some, a lot of space for some mobility, so foam rolling and mild balls and really trying to get those athletes moving correctly with correct exercise and flexibility A couple more other common areas is there's a nutrition lounge, and it's kind of, it's across from the weight room, and you probably walked through it, there's no countertops and a ledge or anything, so you might not even have noticed that it was there, but we are going to have a nutrition lounge, and it's going to be there for refueling, so definitely right after weight training, strength, strength and conditioning workout or something, we are going to have a supervised refrigerator with protein shakes and yogurts and stuff like that for in-between meals, right after workouts, so say they finish at 2:00 in the afternoon, and the cafeteria is not open until 5:00. We need to replenish that body and build, you know, the muscles back up with protein and everything, we're going to be able to provide that for them. And so that's also, it's also going to be the kitchen for the dorm, there's going to be a full range with sink and everything, so if they did want to take time to cook food at a different time on their own, they could. The third floor, I believe you guys went up there to, it's a team meeting space, or really just a flex space for whatever we may want to do, whether it be looking at film, beginning of season meeting, but with the capabilities of walking out to the front balcony or the roof deck, opening that whole space is just going to be awesome. It's definitely capable for all of the technology and audio and visual stuff, so we can do presentations and all that. And then, but what's really important, you know, and I want to make sure to say, these common spaces will be supervised by WC athletics or, you know, a staff member. And so we have in the plans and in the budget ways to add part-time workers, me as the head athletic trainer, O'Reilly, our associate athletic trainer, will help supervise along with coaches in the weight room, so we definitely want to keep safety in mind. And like I said before, the Betty Jo Graver Center will not be closed, but it will be more openly available for those non-student athletes and faculty and staff to work out. So all in all, this facility will be truly like a wow factor for all athletic recruits. They're going to come in, and if you want to wow a student athlete, top-tier student athlete, they're going to walk in this athletic trainer, this strength and conditioning room and be like, man, I want to come here. So it's going to definitely bring that wow factor. Thank you. Dr. G is going to wrap it up.
Thanks, Chris.
Kind of like what Chris was just saying, I've traveled with athletic teams and been to all the different colleges that we compete against. Wow. I've seen the other ones with their living in, this is going to be definitely beautiful. Just to show you how important housing is, how many of you have ever been to one of our campus cookouts? That started out as a cookout behind Cow's Hall. Show you how where supervisors, you know, campus police rallied around and then it expanded. That started from housing, so housing is very important. Then the next thing, how many events is Safe Halloween? That's another event that started with campus police and student housing, and it has expanded. So with the students that are living, they want things to do, they need things to do, and they talk about different things, and then they bring them to us, we know, and we get it involved and get it started, and that's how those two events grew to where they are today.
I'd just like to point out, we do have a volleyball player who's taller than 6'3", she's 6'4 1/2", so it's not just men who are going to be enjoying the size of those beds. I hope you enjoyed our presentation. I would like to thank all of you in the board for supporting this very important and ambitious project. I'd like to thank Resident Farmer and Dr. Cantrell for all their hard work on making this come to reality. I put this picture here just to remind us again of the transformation of the college and where we're headed in the future. This building we're in right now, and Durant Hall, is signifying that we're a new horizon for the college, in some ways is a maturity of the college, and it becoming something more like a university than a community college, you know? So students can get a world-class education at a community college price, and in the process, these student athletes are going to come here, and they're going to be blown away by what they see, and they're going to say, where do I sign? Right now, I don't need to go back and talk to my parents, let's just sign it right now, which is what we want. And also by expanding our student housing, that will open up rooms for non-student athletes who were on that waiting list last year, we don't have to say no to them now, we can bring them on. And this is going to bring a lot of students from elsewhere. I remember a student last year who wanted to come here for the sonography program, and she was signed up on the list about a week or two before the semester, so she called me up and said, is there any chance I could be where I am on the list? And I thought, I don't think there is, and she lived four hours away, so she had to withdraw and go to school closer to home. So one, then we lost a student, and two, it's a student who wants to do sonography, and they're really, really good students. And so this is going to allow us to bring top-tier students, period, student athletes, non-student athletes. It's going to be, it's going to be a game changer for this college. Thank you very much.
What is a non-student athlete?
A non-student athlete, that's someone who is not on a varsity team.
But it is a student.
It is a student, yes.
The phrase we use was a non-student athlete.
Oh, did I say that wrong?
Student non-athlete.
Oh, there are student athletes and then non-student athletes. Student athlete is someone who's in the varsity team.
Who pays for the refueling foods?
We do. That comes out of the athletics budget, and we are working out to make sure that it's tightly controlled as far as that's concerned.
They have to have a badge or something, they know.
We're thinking about, why don't you come up? You're the expert.
So that's a, that's a very good question, because as of right now, we don't, you know, provide protein shakes and protein bars and all of that stuff, but we are currently, you know, coming up with a plan to use the cafeteria, they're all on meal plans anyways, and so we're going to maybe be an extension of that, and then also make room in our budget to provide that. And only, not five a day or once every day, it's really right after strength and conditioning workout.
For athletes?
For athletes.
But the non-athletes didn't get that kind of privilege?
It's coming out of the athletic budget for the athletes.
All students who live in the dorms must be on a meal plan, and if you go into the, into the area where they pick up food, there is bananas and apples and fruit and all sorts of, they could just grab, stick in their pockets, and go on down.
Plus, after that, student activities, we also just purchase food items, snacks, depending on what he's talking about, that'll be in the cafeteria as well as Coyote Village, where any student can come by and pick those up. We have the comfort basket that we place all over campus, with some of the same thing that Chris is talking about, where students can go by and pick those up throughout the day as well.
Many of the food donations that were made in November, a lot of that, that we didn't put in the pantry, we put down in the kitchens, the kitchen for Coyote Village. So there's always food available.
My last question goes to you, Dr. T, and that is, are there public gerid studies that show a positive correlation between athletics, academic success, and dormitory conveniences, quality of the dormitory?
So you're asking, is there a link between? So you're asking, is there a link between student athlete success?
Is there a positive correlation between having a wonderful dormitory room and so on?
Yes, well, we know for a fact that statistically, just overwhelmingly, students who live in dorms are more successful than students who don't live in dorms. And so that should translate to student athletes.
That's not the question. Not whether they live in a dorm or not, but what, how the quality of that dorm. Is there a positive correlation? We're building a wonderful set of rooms near suites. But is that really, is there any proof that that makes any difference? Because I kept hearing the phrase, they'll do much better in athletics and so on if they live in this particular dorm. Well, is that?
Should it translate into academics is what you're asking?
Do we know that's true?
For academics, well, that's a tough question because how do you, term quality is a subjective term. So at Stanford, they might say this about what's quality versus this quality.
Well, it is a tough question, but academics have been handling that, or research has been handling that for years and years and years. It's usually handled by jury, jury publications and that sort of thing. Anyway, thank you.
Okay.
Gentlemen, thank you all. We appreciate your time. We're down to item number eight, I believe. Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir.
You have some announcements to give us.
Yes, sir, I do. Several upcoming events. You have the list and your board packet. I won't go through all of these because it's a very, very busy time. You probably know that spring break is next week. However, we still have several activities, including our first-ever regional basketball tournament that we are hosting here on our campus in the Betty Jo Graver Athletic Center next Wednesday through Saturday. There's been a committee working very hard on this for a number of months. And as of last night, our men's basketball team qualified for that tournament. They're tied for second place in the conference right now. There is a bracket on our website at WC Athletics dot com. I think Ryan might also have some brackets here as well if you'd like to see that. And we'd love to have you here for that. Several baseball and softball games. Softball has begun conference play, baseball begins conference play next week on Wednesday. March nineteenth, this is the Tuesday after we get back from spring break, Frontier Tales and Canvas Trails. This will be in the Speaker Jim Wright Library. And this is kind of an unveiling of our Michael Martin Murphy Western Heritage Collection. We'll have some art to display. Mr. Murphy will be there speaking as well. Be a really interesting time. That'll be from four to six o'clock in the library. Fine arts-wise, we have our songwriters showcase on March twenty-first. That's at the Outkast Center. And then March twenty-second, our alumni awards luncheon. That's at eleven-thirty here in this room. Board members, we'd love to have you come and attend that and celebrate our honor Eves this year. And then it's all about the music. Great fine arts presentation, April the fourth, headed up by our own Mr. Dwayne Brett. And a note, April fifth, that piano concert has been canceled. We'll make that note to you now. And if you have any questions, please let us know.
When is graduation this year, Mr. Baker?
May twenty-third. May twenty-third, six P M.
Same location?
Same location, sir.
We're down to item number nine, where we'll enter into a closed session to discuss real property matters and the employee public office matters that have been posted on the agenda. And we will be in recess for those purposes.
Now it's 2:31 PM still on March the 7th of 2024. We're back from our closed session on the topics that I previously alluded to. And we're now down to item number 10 on the posted agenda. Consideration or possible action with regard to items of real property consideration. We have no action items under that category today. So I will move on to item number 11. Consideration and possible action for appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment. Duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee. We do have one item under that, and that is the annual evaluation in the employment contract of the college president, Todd Allen Farmer, in that regard. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I make the motion that we renew Weatherford College President Todd Farmer's employment contract for an additional one-year term extension at a 7% salary increase.
All right. Is there a second to the motion?
A second to the motion.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, raise your hand please. It's unanimous that is so ordered. I believe that completes the posted agenda for today. I have a motion to adjourn.
I saw move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you very much.